This episode of Southeast Iowa Today is brought to you by Griner Auto Body of Washington, Iowa, using state of the art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa, no matter who Frankenstein it, they can fix it, clean it, and customize it. McDonald Boneyard of Kyoto, Iowa, for all your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. Henshaw Trailer Sales of Richland, Iowa. You need a trailer? They've got your trailer and they can fix what they sell and don't in their full-time repair shop. Gerling Repair of Winfield, Iowa. If your mower is dead, call Fred, your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Gravely dealer. Fred also fixes and sells snow blowers. B and B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. Dutch Market and Coffee Talk of Washington, Iowa. Dutch Market can handle all of your grocery needs and they even have a conference room you can use for free. Coffee Talk's drive-thru is open and ready to serve you coffee, energy drinks, sandwiches, baked goods, and ice cream. They all present the award-winning Southeast Iowa Today. Here's the author of Christie's Journey, The Beat Goes On, and your host, John Bane.
Thank you announcer Cody Roy of NewEnglandDukes.com and your golden pipes for that wonderful introduction. I am at Your Choice Family Restaurant today because I just am using their little area here, little private area, to conduct an interview with Kurt Shinstock of Salem, Iowa. And we talk about what's been going on at the Mount Pleasant School Board and the fact that they want to spend forty million dollars of taxpayer money to kind of consolidate their whole school district in the former Iowa Wesleyan College area. And there's also talk about an indoor soccer practice field. So you want to stick around for this episode and we're going to get right to it. And let me know in the comments what you think. And also make sure to give this episode a like and follow and subscribe. It's free. Kurt, welcome to the program.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Well, there's a lot going on in Mount Pleasant in the school board and things that people weren't going to hear me say that they're going to say, what do you mean there's a lot going on? And they don't even know about it. And that's kind of what your goal is here to do.
Yep. Like, there's a lot of people that are either misinformed or just don't know. And that's a big concern of mine because I'm not saying that our education system doesn't need some help, but I think the school board is going about it in a completely wrong direction.
And how so?
Basically, they're wanting to spend forty million dollars to do an addition on Van Allen and a new building out at the Iowa Wesleyan campus to consolidate the elementaries. And that is actually to decrease classrooms. They're spending forty million dollars to eliminate teacher positions.
Wow. And how many teacher positions is that that they're going to?
Currently, there is forty sections and they want to drop it down to thirty-six at the max.
So that means at least four teachers would be without work?
Correct. I refrain from saying firing teachers because the teachers are currently leaving on their own anyway, so there won't be any fire probably?
So why are they leaving?
Not sure. I don't have a good answer for that.
So it's not retirement?
Some retirement, but I don't believe that is even figured into the teacher retention equations that you can look up online.
Okay, okay. So I noticed I was going into Mount Pleasant a while back and went past the former Iowa Wesleyan and I noticed a really big Mount Pleasant School District type sign there. And I'm like, wow, things are happening. That's a, that's a big sign.
Yeah, they're spending a lot of money where they don't need to be. Actually, last night, a friend of ours told us their daughter was at volleyball at Hal Hall and the roof is still leaking. They had buckets on the floor catching rain. It was in the due diligence report, but apparently there's no discussion that I can find on Mount Pleasant's website about even repairing the roof. There's plenty of discussion of fixing the air conditioners that work but are dated. And they even want to, they've even discussed refinishing the floor, but they haven't fixed the roof. Or discussed it.
You can think of something dripping on a refinished floor, that refinished floor won't last too long.
Yep. And there's some big numbers involved there. They were talking, I think it was, let me look at my paper here, four hundred and twenty to five hundred and sixty thousand dollars to repair that roof.
Wow.
And they are neglecting it. They haven't even discussed it according to any search I can find at any school board meeting.
Well, me hearing this and not really having a dog in the fight, but just hearing it, first thing I think is, well, they don't want to spend four hundred and sixty thousand on that roof where they can knock that building down and put up another one.
That's the one they're adding to school too. That's the newest building at Iowa Wesleyan.
Well, okay, you would think that they'd want to fix the roof then.
You would think. I don't know the details on why they haven't, but when I was told it was still leaking, I looked up on their website on all the board meetings and actually used the search bar, typed in Hal Hall. The only thing mentioned is the air conditioner units on the roof, which they just awarded a contract to replace. And there was one discussion about finishing the floor.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
Let's take a quick break because I'm noticing a little technical issue. I don't see your light on the microphone and I want to make sure that it didn't shut off. So we're going to take a quick pause. While I take care of that technical issue, make sure to give this episode a like, follow, and subscribe. It's free. Here comes Kurt. We're going to get right back to Kurt. Here we are. Kurt, thank you for your patience. We're back. I fixed that little technical issue and so let's kind of try and pick up where we left off, so.
So one of the big arguments about closing the school or one of their concerns was the age of the elementary schools. So I actually did the little research. If you count the additions done, the average elementary building, including additions, was built in nineteen seventy-four. The average year built for the Iowa Wesleyan buildings, including the additions, is nineteen thirty-eight. So we're adding on older buildings.
Right.
And that's not a concern, but the concern is to keep or to close our elementary schools because they're old. It's, there's a lot of stuff that don't make sense.
How do they justify that? And when I say they, am I talking, do I refer to they as the school board or some other?
The school board is ultimately making these decisions.
Okay.
I don't think that as elected officials, they are being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars or the education system. I personally believe that they're just wanting new fancy and.
Wanting something shiny.
Wanting something shiny.
The other kids have it, they need it too.
I think so. One of their things, arguments was new will help with the open enrollment, which I disagree if, that's another sore subject. The current plan for the building is thirty-six sections. They want to keep class size at twenty. Current enrollment, it's over twenty with thirty-six sections. They are planning, John had a one-on-one meeting with us the other night and they, he said, this is a thirty-year plan. The thirty-year plan is hoping our school does not grow.
Hmm.
And my, that's how I perceive it. You want max class sizes of twenty? We're already maxed with the plans you're putting in place for forty million dollars? How is our school going to grow?
Wow.
And there's no room to build on in them locations. It's setting us up for future failures slash issues.
And you just wonder, okay, so they want the class sizes now, as you said, they're the sections?
Twenty point something.
A section, I assume, means a student?
A classroom.
A classroom, okay.
So there's currently, there's currently forty sections or forty classroom teachers in the district. They want to knock that down to six per grade or thirty-six total. Eliminating four sections.
Gotcha.
Again, eliminating teacher positions for forty million dollars.
Right. It definitely is head scratcher. Now, I know there's, there's a, a, a school board meeting coming up on Monday, February tenth at six PM at the library at the high school.
Correct.
And there's opportunities for the public to speak.
Yep. You have to call or email John, I believe, and I'm not sure the deadline on when.
And what's John's last name?
Henderson. He's the superintendent.
Okay, okay. But I imagine there's going to be a lot of people there at this meeting.
I believe there's going to be a few, yes.
Because there's a lot of questions to be asked, you know? Hopefully, I can get somebody from the school board to come on too at some point and ask these questions of them and they can share it with my audience. But at the, at this point in time, I'm just getting, I'm saying this out loud so that anybody watching knows, I'm just becoming familiar with this whole scenario. We're just kind of scratching the surface.
I, I have learned more about education since this started than I have ever known, just trying to figure it out on my own.
And that happens because you're a dad and you're a taxpayer.
Correct.
And you're noticing things.
They just don't make sense.
Don't make sense. And when you were taught math, math was two plus two equals four.
Correct.
And I heard from some folks from Iowa Legislature that that's what math is going to do again, it's going to be two plus two equals four.
They're getting rid of Common Core?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great.
So hopefully, you know, we can all use the same math again. But right now, it doesn't make sense.
Uh, I understand it a little bit, but I'm really good at math.
But I meant this equation that we're talking about.
This equation with the school?
Yeah.
Nothing makes sense.
Yeah, it just doesn't make sense.
None of it, in my eyes, is even remotely makes sense.
So I guess maybe somebody will ask a question on Monday night, maybe we'll get some sort of answer. I'm planning on being there.
I'm planning to be there too.
Take this camera and, and cover this too. I hope that the place is packed because that makes good podcast material, number one. And number two, for the folks that can't come, we'll have an avenue forum to see it.
Sounds great.
Yeah. So tell me more about what you've been, you've been finding out.
So one of my biggest concerns is as a general person that's not involved in the school, if you were to go to the election in November and you see on the ballot that, hey, they want to spend some money on the schools. Me, knowing nothing, I would vote yes because more money should equal better education. But if you find the details or look at the details of what they're wanting to do, they're wanting to eliminate teachers and consolidate to two locations that are constraining for our district to grow and learn. And there's multiple safety issues. Both schools are adjacent to the train tracks. Traffic flow is an issue at the schools we have now. The other day, I drove by Lincoln when they were doing pickup and it was blocks of cars coming out. How are you going to do that when you put them all in one area with train tracks in the middle blocking traffic?
Great question.
Crossing guards, that's a highly traveled road. It's not a back road. It's one of the main drags through town.
Isn't it in Iowa?
Yes, Iowa Ave is what it's called coming into town anyway. I do not know through town. You know, and you put all your kids in one location or I shouldn't say one location, but you put more kids in one location, there's potential for a lot more issues, you know? Nobody wants to talk about school shootings or anything like that, but.
But we have to.
We have to because that's an unfortunate world we live in. And even if it was just a threat, now you're talking hundreds of extra kids in that location versus they're spread out and the kids in the other schools are not involved.
Is there one school that outshines the other schools as far as student performance and, you know, grade?
Student performance is, Salem does do better than the other ones in town, but the ones in town, Lincoln, Harlan, and Van Allen are all doing well. And there's no need to change that. Salem, I will admit, has lower class sizes, better demographics, if you would say. So that's kind of skewed a little bit is what everybody says, and I'll agree, it kind of is, but.
But if you're, if you're a parent there or a student there, you're, you realize your, your child is getting a much better education.
There's actually nineteen kids open enrolled to Salem out of eighty-six.
Wow.
There's a desire for parents to send their kids there.
And do you know if they come from the other schools in Mount Pleasant or are they coming from out of district?
Out of district and from Mount Pleasant. I know one person particularly that's from Mount Pleasant. I don't know how many are from Mount Pleasant. And I do know there are some from out of district that come to Salem.
Gotcha, gotcha. Boy, there's never a dull moment in Southeast Iowa. That's for sure. So, you know, when we're in a situation like this, in the scenario that things just don't make sense to us, I know one of the things that I do is I try to think about the person, the other person.
Perspective, yeah.
Yeah, their perspective, try to get in their shoes. Have you thought about that and figured?
Yep.
And thought, why would they be thinking this way?
Their argument or reasoning for closing the elementary schools is to consolidate to save resources. And there's been studies, we have a group of people that have joined together to kind of research this subject and figure out some answers that they have brought in up. And one of the facts that was found that the average consolidation of schools saves less than four percent. Four percent is not very much in the grand scheme of things.
No.
When you're talking eliminating teachers. And then the other questions that are avenue that they want is the age of the buildings and the cost to maintain the buildings. And actually, one of the big arguments was it supposedly costs two grand more per student at Salem than they'll, other elementary. But if you break that down, it does cost that much more. Four hundred of it is building cost. And that is mainly because it's all electric versus get natural gas because Salem doesn't have natural gas. The rest is personnel cost. Teacher retention at Salem's a hundred percent. They're seasoned teachers. They're higher paid teachers. That cost will not go away. It'll just migrate to the Mount Pleasant schools. I think that personally shows something well with school because the teachers are happy, they bond with their children, they're staying.
And the children are succeeding.
Yes.
So it's not like they're just passing them on and they're not learning?
And also the Mount Pleasant kids are succeeding too. They're right on track and everything like that. There's no distinct problems with anything with elementary schools. This is strictly try and save money. It's not to better the education, in my opinion. They are pushing it that it is, but they can't give me a reason or even, they, they claim they need more space is their reasoning, but they're eliminating classrooms.
So do you think?
So I don't understand how that makes sense.
Do you think they're getting any pressure from the state government?
So part of this bond is a daycare addition. The state is pushing for daycares to be joined to the schools. I personally think the daycare is a great idea, but they are approaching it in the wrong manner.
How are they approaching it? Because of the fact that it's associated with the school?
No, it's the fact that they are trying to consolidate all the elementaries and close schools and just put this in the bond. And then they are going to, or lease that ground, or not ground, sorry, building out to a preschool or daycare that is currently already in Mount Pleasant. They're just moving the service across town.
So is the current location a rundown dump?
I don't believe so. I've never been in it. I can't say yay or nay to that, so. But I have heard, and don't quote me, that they have staffing issues and that it's not an economical solution for daycare because of the cost associated or however you want to say. But as a taxpayer, not a parent, as a taxpayer, we're spending millions of dollars to provide a building for a private company?
Yeah, that's.
I'm not trying to say that the Mount Pleasant, that wouldn't help our school. I think they're going about it the wrong way. I think it should be its own issue and brought up totally separate from the school system itself.
I think usually historically when government helps businesses, it's usually in the form of a tax break for X amount of time or something like that. To get their feet on the ground and get going, but it just sounds like it's a little.
And I don't know the details on exactly because they don't have any of that that I have come across. Me personally, I think that enrollment has left due to the daycare in New London slightly, not as much as they say. I don't remember how many kindergartners opened enrolled out to New London last year, like nine or ten, I believe.
And in those cases, in those cases, they have to find their own transportation there.
Correct. I think half of that, in my personal opinion, is probably for the convenience of the daycare. And the other half is they don't want to deal with the mess that Mount Pleasant has for a school system anymore. There's a lot of open enrolls. And actually, the open enrollment, if you do it percentage by number, the high school's the highest, not the elementary schools.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Now, you know, I think about this, if the school district, if Iowa Wesleyan hadn't gone belly up and was just chugging along, doing his thing like it did for, what, a hundred years or however long it was? And what would the school system be thinking? What would have been their plan if they didn't have all these extra buildings that came across at a good?
So the new high school opened in ninety-nine. I was the first class to go all four years. And the bond that was passed for it in that was a stipulation that the elementary schools got added on. They went away from grade alike because it was disliked and all future buildings were built at the high school for one giant campus.
So they've still got that concept in mind?
Not at the high school.
No, but I meant at Wesleyan.
Yeah.
And is it because it's more in town or?
I, I don't know. I think it's a way to justify their purchase of Iowa Wesleyan when there's no, there shouldn't be a need to justify it. I personally don't think they should have bought it. The gym is the only thing useful, in my opinion. The auditorium seats so many school people, they can't even have graduation there. I think it holds a little over two hundred people.
Wow.
And graduating class of over a hundred, you can't invite both your parents. A lot of kids have four parents, grandparents, siblings. That was their justification of buying it.
Quite a few worms we have.
Yeah, they can utilize it, don't get me wrong. You know, their fine arts probably use it a lot. But the big argument of buying it because it's something that we don't have. Yeah, well, I don't have an old beat-up truck. I'll go buy one and they'll set in the weeds. I actually already have like five. You know?
But you're not buying, it's one of those things where, hey, someday I might like to have a.
Yeah.
Whatever, and I just don't buy it when I don't have the money or the actual need or the way that it makes sense?
A way for me to look at it is, I want a pickup, I need a tonner. I don't go buy an S-ten just to say I bought a pickup when it doesn't fulfill my needs.
Right.
That's a good analogy for it.
There you go. That's perfect.
Yeah.
You just filled in that visual.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, I mean, there's just so much going on, you know? We talked a little bit, you know, about the concerns of the location of the former Iowa Wesleyan.
Yeah, and there's more concerns on the location than that. The low-income housing that's going next to it, the fact that there's no fire hydrants, the fact that if there was a fire, the school or the fire department has to wait on the train tracks. They're planning a two-story building for elementary kids. Elementary kids in a fire on two stories? Come on, don't make sense.
It doesn't make sense. And what do, I mean, gosh, what have we learned from California?
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, I mean, they, different pro, different reasons for the problems, but the same problems. There, when you go to use a fire hydrant, there's no water in it.
Yeah, well, they ain't even there.
Yeah.
They're not even on that side of town. So there's, there's a lot of issues that just don't make sense and.
Do you know if there's a timeframe on what the school board wants?
They're wanting to take it to bond this November and then their estimated project is three to four years, I believe.
Okay.
I believe.
And it's forty million dollars?
That's, their estimate was thirty-five to forty million. They're going to bond for twenty-five to twenty-six, borrow against the future penny ta, penny tax income, which if you're not familiar with that, the penny tax is their source of revenue from the state for maintaining buildings. So by borrowing against that, they're restricting our ability to maintain these buildings for the foreseeable future. And we just bought buildings that are hundreds of years old.
Wow. It just sounds like to me, everybody needs to stop for a minute and count to ten.
Yeah. I mean, the repairs on Iowa Wesleyan alone more than surpassed the budget for the year for maintenance, and now we're going to borrow against that money.
Wow. Wow. I'm just kind of looking at the list of things that you provided here. Excuse me. There's just, there's so much here. And you'd said like the average year that the Iowa Wesleyan buildings were built was nineteen thirty-eight and the average elementary building years?
Counting the additions. So the way I come up with that is I just went to Beacon and Beacon will tell you when the original building was built.
Sure.
And the additions of each one. And the majority of the elementary schools were actually added on to in nineteen ninety, give or take a little bit. Like, I think the gym at Van Allen was built in nineteen ninety, but don't quote me on that.
Okay.
But that, the numbers in front of me, I can't remember.
Sure. But the point is, the, the current buildings in the Mount Pleasant School District are different.
They're not in disrepair.
Right, and they're yet, they're newer buildings.
Yeah, and.
Even though they're old.
And they all just got newer air conditioner units put on. And that was another argument was that the air conditioning is going to be getting towards the end of its life cycle and they, air conditioning, all appliances are just like tires on a car. You get so much life out of them, I don't care if it's on a new building or an old building.
True.
You got to replace them.
Yep.
All the stuff at Iowa Wesleyan needed replaced. That was not a concern, but our elementary schools, which just got done, I believe, five, six years ago, is now a concern and there's nothing wrong with them.
So today, when we're talking and we're, we're visiting, today is March fifth, twenty twenty-five, and what do you think should happen as far as should, should somebody, how do you, if, if it is to say, hey, just stop, school board, you don't know how good you've got it right now, to, oh, okay, maybe they're right on something? What, what would be Kurt's ultimate final outcome?
So not saying there isn't a few concerns that do need addressed, that they are pointing out, whatever you want to say. There's lack of room in certain schools. But we actually asked John, when we had a sit-down with him a week and a half ago, I think it was, if they even looked into doing additions onto the elementary school to better fit the needs with a lot less input costs. And that wasn't even a consideration.
Because then you probably had to hire a teacher.
Yeah, probably. And the other thing that probably could be done, and I mentioned this to John, was I asked if they ever looked into any alternative routes or avenues to spend some of the penny sales tax that they. that they claim they have an abundance of. They're borrowing against it, so they must. To lower our utilities and increase that general fund cushion for teachers or the resources that he is trying to cut. You know, if you didn't have an electric bill at these schools, solar, I'm not a big fan of solar, but if you're only allowed to spend on infrastructure, you build a solar to offset some of the electrical cost, then you hire a teacher for every class or every school, just in the savings.
And I think the solar though, it takes what, twenty years or more to even see your first part of your ROI?
I'm not for sure. And I'm not an advocate for solar. I, I'm not saying it ain't gonna be there in the future, but I don't think it's there now.
Right.
But their big argument is they're only allowed to use money out of certain buckets. They have the general fund to pay teachers, utilities, and, uh, their day-to-day stuff. They got the penny sales tax. They can use it for just infrastructure. If there's a way to utilize the money here to offset the costs here and increase the budget for our teachers and our edu, actual education, they haven't even pursued or thought of it.
You know, it makes me wonder, it's like, is this, again, trying to put myself in their shoes.
Yep, go ahead.
Is this a, a real problem or are they just trying to perceive problems and they feel like, in order to feel like they're doing their job, they need to spend money?
That could be. I think that, in my opinion, they want new fancy stuff to try and, they say, try and help with open enrollment. And a lot of people probably don't even know this, but they're wanting to build an indoor soccer practice field slash field house in this bond as well. That's not been spoken of much. I'm not saying it wouldn't be.
Team, is the soccer team that popular and have a lot, a lot of people, kids playing and a lot of people coming to games?
My kids are all in elementary. I don't follow sports that much. But I'm not saying it wouldn't be a nice luxury to have, but I don't think it's a need. I think they're, they're putting their wants ahead of their needs. So a couple of years ago, the FFA actually went and asked the school, excuse me, if they could, uh, utilize some of the ground at the high school for a test plot, plant a small field to learn how corn and beans grow. We live in Iowa. It's an agricultural state.
Kind of makes sense, yeah.
It actually would have tossed the school board or the school system no money. It just wanted to utilize the unused ground.
Wow.
They turned them down because they didn't like the fact they were gonna tear up the grass, cosmetic wise, whatever, but they wouldn't let the FFA do that. But they want to spend millions on a soccer practice field.
But they didn't want to see any more corn or beans or anything like that?
It shows, it, in my opinion, that shows that they are putting sports and, uh, stuff ahead of academics. I'm not saying sports are bad. I was in sports, wasn't good at them, but I was in them. And I think there is a lot of good that comes from sports. But if we're willing to spend a lot of money on sports out of that fund, why couldn't we let these guys do this for free?
And, and I'm guessing they could have had some sort of garden of some sort or.
Yeah.
Or maybe, or possibly just, you know, field corn or?
Uh, I think the idea was, uh, don't quote me, I think it was just a small field, half beans, half corn.
Okay.
So that way they could see how the plants grow, you know, disease comes in, the teacher can explain to them. Hands-on learning versus looking at pictures in a textbook.
And, and, and there's kids in Mount Pleasant, which is probably hard to believe, that have never been in a cornfield.
I'm sure there's more than you realize.
Yeah, because, you know, a lot, I mean, if you don't live out in the country and you live in town, town may be the only place you ever go.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you, you could be educating these people.
Science classes could be utilizing that as well.
Exactly.
And it was just turned down.
Wow, there's some head scratching going on here on this side of the camera right now.
Well, there's been a lot of head scratching on this side for quite a while here now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, as I said, I'm just, just starting to get, uh, introduced to all this. So my questions, uh, aren't as good, aren't as good as, uh, when I get a little more versed. So what, what should I, should I have asked you that I haven't?
I'm not for sure. Let me look at, I got some notes here so I didn't forget anything.
You know, a lot of times, uh, I'll go ahead.
I guess one of the other notes I wanted to hit on is they're spending massive amounts of money and time and resources to do this. Just the initial plans, the preliminary plans, sixty-four thousand five hundred dollars. That's not even building plans. That's just, this is an idea, rough, catch up. And I mean, there's no elevator, we don't even know what the building's gonna look like. We just know what the floor is gonna look like.
Wow.
And then they are spending three thousand dollars a month to promote this. If it was something that the community needs and wanted, why would you need to promote it?
Great question.
That's, uh, twenty-seven thousand dollars between the time they're, I think, maybe twenty-four. I don't remember exactly what month it started, but that's a lot of money between now and November.
Yeah.
That's half of a teacher's salary or better. It doesn't make sense.
Well, they got that taken care of because they won't be, they won't be there.
That, that's the way they think, I think.
Probably so.
And I, to sum it up, they're spending millions of dollars to break something that ain't broke, in my opinion. And it, they can say it's for education all they want, but you can't tell me you're spending forty million dollars eliminating teaching positions, eliminating classrooms, and it's helping our education.
There has to be a lot more explaining it.
Some, somebody's got some idea somewhere and I, I said earlier, math was my strong suit. The kids don't disappear when you get rid of the teachers. They gotta go to the other teachers.
Yeah.
Increasing that class sizes, more strain on teachers, less teacher retention.
Well, it's even strain on the student.
Yeah. And the other thing is, the tax on this increases our property tax by twenty-two point six percent. Current is twelve dollars and something per thousand. I don't know the exact number. It's going to increase by two dollars and sixty cents, I think. It then, it mathematically comes out to twenty-two point five six percent.
And so folks, and that's, and then the, the individual dollar amounts is per every thousand.
That's per, per every thousand dollars of value you own.
Yeah. So figure out, folks that are watching and listening, what your house is worth there in, in Mount Pleasant School District and then multiply that number to it and you'll see where that twenty-two percent.
If you currently pay a thousand dollars a year in taxes, you're gonna be paying twelve hundred and twenty-six dollars. Easy, rough numbers.
Yep. And if your house is worth a hundred and fifty thousand, multiply it times that.
Yeah. It, it, it's a financial strain on the community that's not benefiting our kids.
And right now, we're, we've come out, we're trying to dig and scrape and claw our way out of the last four years where our economy has been in the trash.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not the best time to do that.
Yeah. And the other thing is, they preach, they want to try and get people to open enrolled at town or stop enrollment out, probably is what they should be saying.
Right.
Twenty-two percent higher taxes than the neighboring district? Are you gonna build a house or move to that district? Me? Probably not as appealing.
Right.
It's not gonna stop me if it's a school that I like, but. Enrollment's going down in Mount Pleasant. The local, smaller communities, it's going up. Doesn't make sense. What are they doing wrong?
Doesn't make sense. Well, I think, yeah, I'm looking right now and, um, the timer on this segment, we're at thirty-three minutes and three seconds of podcast excellence. And what I'm gonna do, and we had the other part, we had a little technical problem with the microphone, but I know it still sounded good. We got a lot here for people to soak in.
Yeah.
So I think what I want to do is wrap this up now, have you come back on again, maybe after the school board meeting on Monday night, you know, get your thoughts then, and, uh, encourage people.
Yeah.
Mon, this coming Monday.
This coming Monday.
Six P M.
At the library at the high school.
Yeah, be there.
Even if you just come sit in and listen, if you have concerns, voice them. I'm not the only parent that's concerned and I'm mainly just wanting to point out what they're even doing to the people that don't know.
You know, it's, it, it, I applaud you, Kurt, for coming on and, uh, sharing this information.
I'm glad you had me.
And helping, uh, I mean, you're helping the, the whole area because you're, it's gonna wake people up. And hopefully people watching this will share it. I mean, it's gonna be on Facebook, YouTube, Spotify, iHeart Radio, tune in. It's gonna be all over the place and hopefully people will share this to help get the word out and you guys can pack the library at the high school Monday night at six o'clock and maybe make a difference and, and, uh, you know, sometimes it's good to wake up the sleeping giant.
And, you know, I'm not even trying to tell people that they're sleeping. They shouldn't have to be worried about this. We elected the school board to do what was best for our community.
That's a great point.
Parents shouldn't have to spend hours worrying about the future of their child's education.
Especially when they, they're working eight to ten to twelve hours a day, trying to keep a roof over their heads.
Yep.
Food on the table and, uh, clothes on their backs.
I got, I got a full-time job and I farm. I'm, I'm three kids. Good thing I got a great wife that does a lot of it.
There you go. There you go. Well, thanks again, and, uh, we'll wrap it up here and we'll see you Monday night.
Thanks.
Thanks again to Kurt for being on the program. Thank you for watching. Thanks to my sponsors, Griner Auto Body, Car Doctor, McDonald Boneyard, Hinshaw Trailer Sales, Gerling Repair, B and B Propane, and the family of Jet Stops, The Dutch Market, and Coffee Talk. I hope to see you this coming Monday, March tenth, at the Mount Pleasant School Board meeting at the high school in the library at six o'clock. Stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.